Shut it off. Okay, meeting is now being recorded. It's 5:08. Today is February 9th, 2021. We're going to get started with the meeting for the Nahat zoning board of appeals. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Jocelyn Campbell. And I'm the chair of the Nahat zoning board. With me tonight are David Walsh, Peter Barber, Max Casper, David McCool. And we have two new members who are alternate members and are coming in tonight for the first time. Kate Lee Kelly and Michael Rower. Thank you, everyone. So we're going to call the meeting order right now. And um, explain the process. Uh, the one applicant that decides tonight, I'll be able to um, do it before. Um, process is such that we allow you to re, you know, present your case to us. We then ask any questions that we may have of you, review your plans and things like that. Um, before doing that, we'll read the newspaper advertisement. Uh, but then we'll begin the hearing. Um, we'll have questions from the board. Um, we'll ask if there's anyone there to speak in favor or in opposition. Um, we'll be taking some notes, but we'll also be relying on the recording of this hearing tonight. We'll deliberate, when we deliberate, that's amongst ourselves only. That's not for um, people to chime in. But the public comment period is before that. Then we'll come to a decision. And once we do, um, there's a 20-day appeal period for anyone who would like to appeal. All right? So this evening, I'm going to first explain that um, based upon the governor's order of March 2012, um, the public meeting law has been temporarily changed or put on hold so that we can house all these meetings uh, virtually. And um, Governor Baker has issued an order allowing us to do that. We're going to take all votes tonight by a roll call vote. And um, the next thing I want to let you know is that an advertisement was placed in the Lynn item on January 26th and February 2nd for this event for tonight. And I want to read that quickly to you. The town of Nahat Board of Appeals noted the hearing. Public hearing will be held by the zoning board of appeals on Tuesday, February 9th, 2021 via remote technology pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General law chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of persons that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Nahat zoning board of appeals to be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. And the purpose of the meeting tonight is um, on a petition filed by John Pellerin, owner of the property located at 40 Pearl Road, Nahat, for a special permit for front yard setback. The building inspector has denied a building permit stating that the proposed extension is in violation of section 503 of our Nahat zoning bylaws. The town of Nahat, uh, of the town of Nahat in the following areas. The structure would be an extension of an already non-conforming front yard setback. Okay? Um, next, we have um, a letter that we received from the uh, planning board, which um, I'm going to read to you. And I've sent this to all the members already. It stated February 4th, it came to my attention. And regarding 40 Pearl Road, special permit for garage. Dear Ms. Campbell, this letter shares the planning board's comments regarding the above captioned building permit denial that is on appeal to the ZBA. Although the plot plan is lacking key dimensional elements, the planning board has no objection to this project should the ZBA grant the requested special permit slash variance. They also wrote, "The planning board urges the ZBA to listen to the meeting participants in favor and in opposition to the plan." And that is from Plan Nahat Planning Board. So what other members may not know is that the um, zoning board, when we receive an application, it is sent out to all the different town uh, committees and boards, and they're allowed to comment. The, the planning board in particular has 30 days to, uh, 35 days, I'm sorry, to comment on any special permit application. Okay, so the next step in the process for us um, is to hear from the petitioner. So Mr. Pellerin, if you'd like to tell us um, what you're here for tonight.
Yes, I'm here to uh, get a special um, permit to widen my garage. Uh, current structure uh, is on the older side. Uh, it has some uh, dilapidation uh, that needs to be uh, fixed uh, and torn down and restarted again. And based on the age of the, age of the um, particular structure, um, and today's vehicles, um, we're having a little difficulty getting in two cars into the, uh, into the existing uh, existing structure. And we're looking to widen it by 3.6 feet uh, towards the inside of my property line, where in old, uh, where a flower bed used to exist, or exists. Um, and uh, fix the, the floor within the, within the, uh, within the structure, which is, is continually flooding and on any rainstorm that takes place due to the uh, what's that? Oh, somebody else was talking there. Um, and uh, and, and, and improve the proper drainage. The result of being able to add a little more space will allow us to get, you know, the two cars off the, the street where parking is, is still difficult. Uh, there's not a lot of off-street parking on, on Pearl Road. And this will solve, you know, some of the uh, the parking issues on the road. I apologize, my, my architect is not here tonight. Um, he had a previous meeting at 5 o'clock and could not attend. Um, so I'll see if he'd be here as well.
Okay. Does anyone have any comments or questions to Mr. Pellerin?
I have one question on the um, the dimensional requirement sheet um, that was sent to us. Um, there is a question of floor area ratio. And then there's also a height. Um, it says height exists, uh, required or allowed is 30 feet. Existing is 22 plus or minus, and the proposed is going to be 33.
Yeah, no, you're on, you're on the wrong.
That's on the house.
That's the house. We already went past that.
We're talking about the garage.
We already approved the house.
Yeah, but that was what you sent to us, Jocelyn. Sorry to say.
Is there still an echo? Can everybody hear me?
You have, it, it's not bad. It does echo every once in a while.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you had sent us that dimensional requirement page on the 30th of January.
I'll share my screen and we can talk about it because I think um, I want to make sure that uh, maybe I sent you the wrong thing, if possible. But I believe I sent you the all dimensional requirements for this matter so that you would have it in front of you. Because we didn't get one with the current application. I wanted you to have his specific dimensional requirement. And the other thing that I told everybody was the new table dimensional requirements that would um, you should add to your manual. And that was the table two. And I'm going to show you those two right now. So I want you to share so we can look at that real quickly. I think that would be the way to go about it.
Uh, Peter.
Yeah.
What's your email address? I'll forward you this.
Um, peter.barber@capitalone.com.
Okay.
Okay, can everybody see?
Yep.
I wrote for March 2020 on the left. Everybody see that?
Okay.
Okay, that, that's what you have, correct, Peter?
Yep, you're right. Yep, sorry. Yeah, I didn't see the date on the bottom. I just looked at the date when you sent it to us.
Okay, right, and I, I had, I just wrote that on there today, March 2020. I think I sent it to you just so you would have his dimension.
Okay.
And the other thing I sent everyone was the new table, well, not new, but because it's not in the book. The table two um, of dimensional requirements. This is where it tells us that the accessory building, if you look at the bottom, number six, the accessory building um, can have a 16-foot height on a pitched roof.
Right.
So I just wanted you to know that's what I, I actually called the building inspector's office to find out, you know, what that was.
Okay.
And they, him sent this back to me. But again, the purpose of sending this out was so that everyone would be aware of the current dimensional requirements, which we're not providing in the application for this matter.
Okay. Sorry about that. I was confused.
I think you have ESP and you know what I'm saying all the time. Okay, does anyone else have any questions for um, want to talk about the plans? Do you want to get into our deliberations? Is there any more questions for Mr. Pellerin?
How old, how old is the existing garage?
It's got to be close to over 100 years is the same as the house. I believe, I don't have an actual date of it, but uh, it's the same bricks.
Yeah.
The existing structure, they are cracked inside.
Okay. I understand, I mean, it, you know, cars were a lot narrower in those days too.
Yeah, yeah, true.
Or the horse, or the horse was narrow, I'm not sure.
I think the horse may have stuck out the window in the back, but.
All right.
Okay. If there are no questions, we can ask for um, from people who want to speak in favor or in opposition. And then we can go into our deliberations. So is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the um, matter? Is that Mr. Ms. Beatrice Rogers?
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, I'm in a butter, I'm just one, one house removed. And um, I took a look at that, uh, at the structure. And the only, it's already almost at the street, so it's not going to be any more non-conforming. And the, it's not going to interfere with anybody's view because it's below the level of the house. So it seemed to me that the only, the only effect is going to be that when the Pellerins look out the, is it the kitchen window or the bathroom window? They'll, they won't, they'll see the back of the garage. But it, I don't see that it interferes. It, it seems perfectly reasonable to be, to change it so that it can get two cars in. And it doesn't seem that it's going to affect anything in the neighborhood. So that was my comment.
Thank you. And what's your address, Ms. Rogers?
Sorry, Beatrice Rogers, 44 Pearl Road.
Thank you.
I just have a question. I just have a question as it relates to the abutters. Do the abutters get notice um, of the application? And how did they receive their notice um, by mail or is it like published somewhere?
I got it, I got a mail, I got a mail notice.
Right.
I mean, an actual snail mail notice.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so now, you speak in opposition.
How you doing? Uh, Jocelyn, Sean Quirk here. I live at 36 Pearl Road, which is right next door to the Pellerins. Uh, and that area that they're asking for the extension on would be on our side. Um, and I completely object to it. No, I'm joking. I'm, we are completely in favor of them putting this uh, project forward. The, the work that they've done on their existing house has been a great addition to the neighborhood. And we see absolutely uh, nothing wrong with them moving forward with, with this addition onto their garage. So hopefully all will pass this.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition or?
This is uh, David Brown, One West Cliff, uh, next house over from Sean, two from the subject property. We also have no objection and actually um, believe it will improve the parking situation somewhat on Pearl Road.
And Mr. Brown, what is your address there?
Uh, One West Cliff Street.
Okay, thank you. So anyone else here who would like to speak? I think that we've got everyone, okay?
Yep.
So now that we've heard from the, the public, public comments, uh, we should begin our deliberations. And again, this is between us. And we'll reach out to uh, the applicant if we have any questions for him. Okay? So, everybody thinking.
Okay, so you don't, you don't need us for further comment?
No, 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 you don't, no.
Okay, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I want to talk about what is the um, a specific areas that this property is in, uh, where it does not conform. And so we can decide whether or not this new extended non-conformity is, is greater or intensification of the non-conformity performance of the structure.
As I could see, the, the only non-conformity is the size. And then basically the amount of space it's taking on the property.
Now you're uh, now you're echoing, Jocelyn.
I don't want to call my speaker, I do apologize.
That's all right.
Are the dimensional requirements. And this property seems to be, obviously the area of the lot. Lot coverage would probably increase slightly because of the
Right.
More floor space isn't going to affect the floor area ratio. But it would affect the setback.
Well, there's already, because it's on the property line, there's already, it already uh, we're not making this any non-conforming by allowing it because there's already, it's already uh, sitting too close to the, I guess we're increasing the amount of setback by the part that he's going to be adding. But, but it's already um, you know, it's already um, non-conforming with respect to the, the, the front setback and the side setback.
Looking at the plot plan that was provided in the application. What Wayne said is that in his denial was that the um, the Wayne, Wayne Wilson, the building inspector, was that it was going to be an extension of an already non-conforming front yard setback. And I think I see what he means because the, see the area in yellow?
Yep.
Just into that setback. It's already non-conforming and here they are going three plus feet more into that non-conforming area.
Yeah.
I agree that it is doing that, but at the same time, I think there's a hardship in that the existing garage does not handle two vehicles the size they are now versus they weren't, they were then. Like on a, you know, on a hardship, um, you know, I don't have a problem with it.
Jocelyn, the standard is, is it substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming is, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not about hardship because of, you know, the, these applicants bought this property um, not very long ago, aware of its size, aware of its condition. And now they, we've all, this is our second time providing relief if we do so tonight. To make it fit, make it better, make it bigger. So it's not about hardship really unless you're talking about topography and a variance. But for special permit purposes, you're right, Caitlin. It's a matter of whether this, this increase is a detriment to the, the neighborhood.
Is there anything that, is there anything that we could point to to tell us what means substantially more detrimental? Like, is there a special permit standard or?
No. I've been on the zoning board for a long time and that's always been the, kind of the big question is, what is substantially detrimental? In this particular case, we've had uh, three neighbors, two of them are direct of butters. Uh, basically spoke in favor of the project. In fact, um, to kind of surmise what they said um, that, you know, um, the Pellerins have, have improved the, their, their house and the neighborhood. And um, this will actually help with parking because it means they can park vehicles in the garage. Um, so it's in, in my experience, it's, it's certainly not um, substantially, more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. The, I think the question and, and I always go to Max on these types of, of questions is, you know, what is quote subs, uh, what is more um, you know, what is the creation of more of a non-conformity? This is extending a non-conformity, is that fall into the same category?
Well, I, you know, I always go back to the special, this is a special permit request. And, you know, David, David was, was speaking to hardship, which is um, which is a variance standard and, and we don't need to go there, but that's, that's favorable to the uh, to the applicants, not, not problematic. The, the, you know, the variance standard is, is very hard, nearly, nearly impossible to, to meet. And, and, but the, the special permit, you know, is, in my opinion, is um, is a mu, is a much lower standard, there's much more discretion. You know, there are factors that we are supposed to take into consideration. But, you know, I think, I think we, we do a pretty good job of, of going through that. And um, and I, I certainly feel as though this is, again, within our authority to, to grant this type of a request.
Does anyone have any more question, other questions or um, any further discussion?
No, I agree with Peter that it takes the burden off the street and alleviates parking issues on public way. So I agree with Peter on that.
So I'd like to make a motion um, that this project would not be uh, more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Would that be our finding?
Yes, as a finding.
I'll second that.
Seconded by David Walsh.
Yeah, Peter Barber made the motion.
Hey, um, a discussion on the motion. All in favor, roll call vote.
Uh, Peter Barber says aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Jocelyn Campbell, aye. Okay. So we need to now grant a special permit separate from the finding? Would anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we grant um, the parents a special permit uh, to build, expand their garage structure uh, as uh, plans presented.
I'll second that motion. David Walsh.
Any discussion on the motion? You all in favor, roll call vote please?
Yeah, Peter Barber, aye.
David Walsh, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Jocelyn Campbell, aye. Okay, here we go.
Are you listening to something?
I don't know.
And the public will have 20 days to appeal. We'll get that decision filed for you in the next um, two weeks, along with the minute to this meeting tonight. All right, so if you have any questions, you can ask them now, otherwise you're all set.
Thank you very much, everybody, for your time tonight. Again, thank you. And uh, go for the questions.
Take care.
Take care, thank you. Bye-bye.
Okay, so we only have a half hour left. While we have our, our new members here, really glad you guys are here. Thank you for coming. Um, we need to talk about a few things. We're going to have our annual meeting typically in October, but we had to postpone it because, partly because of COVID. But also we've had a couple of hearings that have really gone over and have been very intense. We really haven't had the ability to have our um, our meeting. Um, for tonight though, I don't sure we have time to go through everything. But we certainly can vote on one thing that um, Tony Barletter, the town manager, has asked us to consider. And that is the application fee for the zoning board of appeals applicant. Um, currently the fee is $400 per application. And then the town pays for the advertisement. Unfortunately, the advertisements have been running $500, $600. And the application fee is only 400. So we've exhausted, they've exhausted our buzz, our budget already for the season, it's only January, February. So he asked that we increase it by leaving the application the same, $400 per application. But having applicants pay for their own um, ad directly to the Lynn item. So what we would do is we'd have, place the ad like we normally do. Kim will get everything ready, place the ad, then she'll notify the applicant that they have to go, either go in and pay or that they have to get call and give a credit card. They don't have a credit card, they can go over there and give a check. So.
Do you know why the advertising fee has been so high? That, that seems outrageous.
Yeah, it seems very.
Yeah, normally it's about 300, I understand. But it's um, at least, at least one of them was 600. And I think it's because of all the extra language because of COVID.
Okay.
I don't know.
And I know the, the other boards and Concom, um, I know Concom, if you're going in front of Concom, you pay for your own advertising. That's always been that way for Concom. So.
Jocelyn, I've got a question. What are the exact rules regarding advertisement? Um, advertisement still has to be done in a local newspaper? There's no change in that law?
No.
Okay.
Only because very few people read the newspaper.
Right, I mean, you could advertise so much more properly by using other mediums.
Right.
I know. But we, we place the advertisement on our website. They place it at the town hall. And then we also have to write, run the ad in the Lynn item for two consecutive weeks uh, prior to our hearing. So it's a little tricky. Once we determine the content of the ad and get the Zoom ready and the notice from, the information from Wayne, et cetera, then it all goes to Kim, she drafts it up, gives it back to me, I review it, then it goes back to Kim and goes to the town clerk. And then she places the ad. And once she places the ad, um, typically it's, you know, two days before it's going to run. So you have to give them time to set it up. So that's the time period that we have to work with. And she's going to have to be a little more diligent in keeping track. But it's really going to be only from now until July. Because what um, Tony Barletter told me is that the town is, uh, has put before, before um, the next town meeting um, an item, I believe on the warrant, so that we can set up a revolving account for the zoning board or for all permitting, I think it's going to be. Right now, they don't have that. So they only have the ability to spend funds that have been appropriated. So we're going to set up a revolving account. So all the permitting fees will go into this one revolving account. And then they can pay for the advertisement out of there. So at that point in time, we'll probably just increase our fee and let Kim go back to placing the ads. But until the next budget is approved and that's done, we need to change our, our ways at the moment until July and make sure that applicants are paying separately for their ads. Now, I don't know if it's always going to be $600, but um, I know at least one of them was 680. I know that there, but there was one, uh, the one for 40 Pearl Road, for some reason was only 281. But I don't understand the difference in the cost. Um, I want to check.
It doesn't run for two straight weeks, right? It, it, it runs on two separate days, right?
Correct.
Right.
I'm just, something just seems messed up. I, I know the fee is $50 for advertising per, per, per petition. And there's never been an issue. So I don't know, some, something, I, I, I totally support having the petitioners pay for their own ads. But we just need to be cautious that they don't screw up the, the notifications. Because the, the faulty notifications can create headaches for the, you know, down the road for the petitions, so.
Yeah, but what I think Jocelyn is saying is Kim will continue to create the, the um, the, the meeting notice, send it to the Lynn item and the Lynn item, and, and then notify, you know, the, the petitioners that, hey, there's a bill for you at the Lynn item, you need to pay that. Once we get confirmation that it's been paid and the, and the notification's going to run, then we'll schedule the hearing or we'll confirm the hearing.
The hearing already has to be scheduled, that, that's the problem.
Not to this.
We're creating another chink link in the chain that's already weak.
Right, right.
That's not the case actually. Peter was correct. That what was going to happen is we'd do the same thing we're doing now, probably better, right? Kim's going to place the ad. And then once it's placed, she'll notify the applicant, they need to call this particular department and pay for their ad. Because the person, everything's scheduled already, it's already placed and written and up there. All the person has to do, the applicant, is to call and give a credit card.
And if they don't, will it still run? Do we know that?
No, it will not run. And so that's one of the things that we also need to do is on our new application, which actually has been quite. which actually has been quite successful the last couple of times. On our new application, what I think we should discuss putting a little disclaimer at the bottom where people sign that indicates that they need to go and pay for their ad. Again, and it's
I totally agree with that.
That warrant item passes and then in July, we can go back to having a revolving fund that is funded and.
We, we still may want to have, even when we go back to revolving, we still may want to, like I said, I know Concom makes, you know, whoever, the, whoever's coming in, they have to pay for their ad. I think it should just be part of the process. I mean, Max, what do they do in Swampscot?
Swampscot's a $400 fee for the petition plus a $50 advertising fee. And then once you pay the town, the town takes care of all of the advertising and the mailing. I wonder, is it the, it's definitely not the mailing that's been part of the cost? Cause I know at times when there's a tremendous amount of Butters, that the mailings in Swampscot can get problematically expensive, but I've never heard anything with the ads. So.
Swampscot's not using Lynn item, are they?
Yeah, they do. Yes.
They use the Lynn item as well?
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to talk with the, the planner who handles things over there because something, something doesn't, isn't adding up.
Yeah, something seems very high, very high.
Yeah, that, that, to me, that sounds like, you know, it's, it's $680 for two ads. And I, I, yeah, I know that there's additional wording with COVID and everything, but it just seems to me that that's really high.
Well, I think it was, sorry, I might have taken five, eight for one. The last one, I think it was the one we did for Mr. Smith. And then the one for 40 per world tonight was only 281. So I don't know what the difference was in terms of why. I don't, I don't get copies of the receipt, so I don't know anything about that. All I know is the town manager asked us to consider.
So do we need a motion for this?
We will need a motion.
If we, if we put the burden on the applicant to, to manage the advertising as we're discussing, the applicant drops the ball, messes it up, screws it up, wastes time. Does that do anything that creates a problem for us in terms of the, the deadlines and so forth that we're under?
Could. Yeah, it could.
Yeah, but if they don't advertise properly and it's, I mean, that's, it's, I think the onus is on us to make sure the advertisement goes in.
Okay, that's a problem.
They don't pay, I mean, again, I think to Jocelyn's point, if we put on the bottom of the application that, you know, your, you know, if, if we get, if we get to the, the actual hearing and we've gotten notice from, you know, the town hall that, hey, they haven't paid their, their advertisement yet, we just continue the meeting. Right? They haven't followed, they haven't followed the proper procedure. So we would just make a motion and continue the hearing. So it's only going to hurt them.
That doesn't put us, that doesn't put us at risk in, in, in transgressing any deadlines that are posed upon us in terms of timely action.
Not if we have a continuance.
Good to tell you the truth.
It could, but.
So what we're going to do is what I suggest or I'm proposing to everyone, and everyone needs to decide this, not just me, is I'm proposing that we include language, a disclaimer of sorts in our, just like we would for a continuance on our application, that the applicant understands that they must pay for the advertisement that has been placed. They can either bring a check to the Lynn item or they can call in a credit card. Those are their choices. If they do not do that and the ad doesn't run, then we're not going to have our meeting and there could be a delay in the process. And they will have to consent to that delay and waive any rights in regard to that if they do not pay for their advertisement timeline.
So we're confident we have the power to impose those conditions merely by writing it in the application. In other words, nobody's going to be able to get away with screwing up the payment, messing up the advertisement and then coming in and saying, you guys didn't act by date X, therefore I'm approved.
I mean, that would, I mean, we're only talking about between now and, and town meeting and, and I don't know, on average, what are we going to see? Maybe, you know, four or five hearings at the most? You know.
Fair enough.
Jocelyn, I would, I would rather see the applicant pay the town
Yes.
for the advertisement.
Yes. Me too.
It would make a lot more sense. You pay $400 for the application and you'll pay whatever it is for the,
Yeah.
Take a credit card or anything. And get them out of the process because it's just a matter of time. Somebody who's doing an application is going to screw it up.
Right. I agree, Dave.
Well, the only thing they would do would be whether they paid or not, because we're still taking care of all the ads as we do now. That would be the plan.
Yeah, but if they don't pay, then it, it's quite, you know, it's, there's the question like, all right, so we have the hearing and they haven't paid yet. I mean, like I said, we could, we could say, well, you, you don't have all your paperwork in. You didn't pay for the advertisement, advertising fee. Therefore, we're going to continue this until you settle, you know, with the Lynn item. I don't know how legal or how, how complicated that would be. Obviously, it means we have to meet on a certain date and then have a continuance to our next date, which is not a big deal. But I, I kind of agree with, you know, the two Dave and, and just go with, you know, have the town call them up and say, hey, you owe an additional, let them know upfront, there's an advertising fee. Once we put the ad in, you're going to have to come back and, and pay the, pay us the fee for the ad. I don't know how difficult that is.
If they don't do that, then you continue, you continue the hearing.
Right.
I mean, I think it's the same one, whether they pay the town or they pay the.
I think we need to have control. I just think the town, our board needs to have control what's going on. Not leave it up to a applicant.
So if the applicant doesn't, doesn't pay for the advertising, we've got the power to reject the application or postpone it till it's, till the condition is satisfied?
I would think so. I mean, think about regular application fee. So they come in, they put in an application and I don't know, the check bounces. What happens?
We, we don't hear it.
We don't hear it. Right. So if they don't pay the fee for the, the, you know, and again, I don't know, I don't think it makes much of a difference whether they pay the Lynn item directly or pay the town. If the fee isn't paid by the time we have our meeting, we open up the meeting like we normally do. We say, at this point in time, we need to continue this because all of the paperwork isn't been taken care of. The fee hasn't been paid. Is that, is, is it as simple as that?
Like, one of the things I'd like to find out is, what is the discrepancy? What's causing the discrepancy? And can we get somebody from the town that can talk to the item and say, what is the fee for advertising for this? I mean, it should be pretty standard.
Right.
You know, and say, they, they say it's $100 for each of the two days that it's there. Well, we add the 200 to the 400 and that's your, that's your cost of, for your application.
Okay, so just to compare, I want everybody to know that, and we heard about Swampscot already from Max, but Marblehead charges $75 per application and they have their newspaper bill the applicant directly. Then Winthrop charges 375 plus a $100 advertising fee. So, you know, what Tony said today is, I'm sure by July, once we get this revolving fund set up, we'll be back in this area of fees. But for now, his preference was that the applicant pays for themselves. I told him I'd present it to you guys and you guys could do what you want. We can all do what we want with a vote on it. If we want to go with having, continuing the way things are, but making sure that the fee for advertising is separate, we could institute that now. I can add it to the application upon a vote and circulate it for everyone, you know, if anybody has any objections. And make sure it's in our rules and regulations as well. We can update those. But that's the best we can do, I guess. So we're not going to have a meeting probably for another two months. So we should make some kind of a decision on this tonight.
All right. I'm going to make a motion that that we add the application, the application, the application fee is 400 and the advertisement fee will be added to it and paid to the town by the applicant.
You want to second that motion?
I'll second it. Peter Barber.
All in favor, roll call vote please.
David Walsh, aye.
Peter Barber, aye.
David McCool, aye.
Max Casper, aye.
Campbell, aye. See, that motion has passed. So that's what we'll do. And we're going to need to obviously change the application. And I'll just put a little comment at the bottom, letting people know they have to pay for that separately. Does that feel right?
Yeah.
Do we need a motion for that or no?
No.
No, I don't think.
I think we need to add one line and update our rules and regulations as well. Cause in there it says that, I think we were really vague because we weren't sure what we were going to do with fees at the time when we established those. I believe it just says, you can draw on the website. It wasn't super specific. So I'll take a look at it and anybody else who wants to look at it and comment on that can do, can too. All right. So I think that's good. Worked. All right. Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
All right. So we'll finish the rest of our, for our annual meeting stuff on the next occasion then. I didn't think we were going to get to it. I really didn't prepare the agenda. We'll do that next time.
Did anybody else get a thick package in the mail today?
Oh, yes.
I don't even know if I could bring that up, Jocelyn, but.
I, I did not.
I did.
Another four, another forest been, has been deforested.
Yes.
Can we retroactively increase the fee for?
Cost of paper alone? So is this something new or is this part of the original?
I believe this appeal has passed through the last hearing.
Oh, okay.
It's an appeal of our last.
All right.
Good. Did you have to sign for it, Peter?
No, it was weird. It, it has a return receipt, you know, green label on it. But I didn't sign for it. It was just left in my mailbox and that receipt piece was removed.
Yeah, same here, Peter. Same here.
I, I'm guessing it's because of COVID. But I, I mean,
Yeah, because it said, yeah, it said, yes, I believe that's the case.
It did say certified mail, actually. Oh.
Our new members are aware, we have an ongoing with neighbors that fight, have been fighting and arguing over matters and appealing our decisions. So litigation is ongoing. Same matter though.
So all the members get sued individually when there's an appeal of one, of a ZBA ruling?
Yeah.
That's correct. They name on it. But there is no liability on your part.
Good to know that now.
Wondering what you were signing it up for?
Right, right.
All right.
All right. Anything else?
No. I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Oh, before we do?
Can't do that yet. All right.
We just got a new packet in, 79 Wilson. 79 Wilson wrote.
79 Wilson.
Been today, I guess Diane told me, the town clerk. So I'll be sending, Kim will be sending that around next week. Okay, so we heard first motion to adjourn, second motion, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Peter Barber, aye. You got to say your name.
David McCool, aye.
Thanks. I got eight minutes to spare. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks, Jocelyn.
Take care.
Bye bye.
Yeah. Thank you. All right.